Sexual treatment. A bit of protection, no, we make the healthiest of projects before it. Paper twenty-nine point five. There is none. Okay, first thing on study session, we have is water safety, leak detection. I did send out one on Friday that had both of them together. We were showing you that was, um, poured up a quick. Then I got an update because I showed them I wanted to see what it would be separate. Uh, for both of them was a hundred and fifty-two thousand one hundred. One thousand dollars. I asked them out and we're doing a thing of, uh, being the data collection and all of that first. And then go back and come out with the leak detection after you get all the data in. So he sent me the other proposal, which is in your book two, uh, now, which is divided drought. It's like seventy-four the leak detection and eighty-four the, uh, eighty-four G, um, down. Putting it together and stuff. So we could do it in favor if we wanted to or.
I think this year, the one days and next year, the next week.
That's what we're thinking or either if we see that by the end, by the middle of the year where we're sending that. Not that you're going through all this financing and stuff to see what kind of, uh, uh, stuff that we're going to need through grants and all of that to figure out what our rates are going to be. And all of that, so that's probably the reasons why I'm looking at going on a few different phases. They're trying to put it all on one, yeah.
I went through it and it looks like a very thorough, uh, report and I like it. I think they're going to look into it. I think that's what's up with it.
So which, uh, stage would you do first? Probably do the data stuff first. Because we, if we can find mistakes or maybe meters not being charged and stuff like that, which would increase. You know, that's a lot of capital loss, whereas we're not chasing the tail with, you see, with, uh, risks.
Well, we can't fix it if we can't find the problem.
Yeah.
That's along with future grants and loan people. We need to show that we're, we're going to get it right from the other account of the water.
Yeah. So Jim Durst is asking the, the seventy dollars, the ten dollars. I would look at that. We can start that pretty much right away. Like you made me, we're talking, uh, it's going to be a lot of work for, uh, all of us here in the office and stuff to get all that information. To have them be able to filter through and, uh, and get taken care of that way. Yeah.
Okay. I would sure like to get the meters changed out before we do this because, uh, we know that that's something we need to do anyway. And I, I would just like to, just like to get on that project. I mean, and then, you know, you got, you have a guy that comes in looking at data. If the first thing he says is you've got sixty meters that are, that aren't working well, then.
So I know.
Yeah, we don't know that. We didn't, we haven't, just haven't done it. So I think we need to do that first. Not even, well, it's expensive.
Yeah.
Maybe we have to check it out again.
What about?
Approximately a hundred.
How many?
Approximately a hundred.
That would go down to about eight hundred, seven hundred something.
Might be close about.
So how are we going on that project? Uh, if we're, let's start to do that first.
They might, they might push the leak detection out till next year. I don't think we can get it done in time to see that project getting there.
I think you make a good one. We can't. If we have. We've been chained up with doing the detection.
Yeah, well, well, there's other issues too. There's, uh, coming for water. We know where it's going. That could be shut off. It would help have a more accurate audit, but we can't too push in the water on it during the period. We have a head once in two thousand eight. We can't fix any problems if we don't know where the problems are. But I agree with Ray that, that we need to get the meter changed out. How long does the meter change out in the process?
Ooh, about four years. Well. Anything else, or? This is on agenda, so. Okay, next we have down first, this is the phase two, uh, portion of, uh, in our down dealing with the, the, for that, uh, it's eight hundred and twenty. Eight hundred and twenty thousand. That will include the football field, import, rating, banquet system, top soil, side, uh, asphalt track, cap filling and field coating. Uh, handicap ramps, field field, uh, concrete search tube field, asphalt trail, run system trail, football field, uh, scoreboard, uh, field. Goalposts, survey, general conditions. It also includes their insurance, building risk, uh, performance pay bond and construction. Continu- uh, continue, continue, I see. Continue, there you go. So, uh, with that, we will get base two started in the process. Can I ask a question?
Why are, why is it going to be, uh, sod for the rest of the turn of the field?
We looked at it and funding wise, just the, uh, dirt field on it was going to be, I believe it was like seven hundred thousand dollars. And we feel by maybe that would, from the upper ground, do that portion. We can do that later on if we need to, but that's part of the thing. Uh, do you saw it, get it going with that in progress?
I don't know for sure. They heard it, they heard it, they will want to eat a little amount of water.
Okay. So this is covered by the grant. Did you see that? Yes. Yes, it's part of that local grant, uh, our energy impact, yeah. Uh, we also got another here, I believe it was sixty thousand or, uh, CTF funding, uh, there's. The other graph was for all the bleachers and stuff, which is out of EJ, EJI home.
He just recently got a big grant.
Yeah, that was for, uh, the, uh, go, uh, go cop. That's about a thousand. Yeah. We also got, they also got a graph for the playground to remove the old one out and put a new one in there. So that's part of the rest here.
And so is, this would be just like our, uh, agreement for the ball, for baseball field, we, we, we're just the past three.
Yes. Everything, um, it's like the pay orders that come in. We actually write a check, send it to the grant people, they send us the money, then we send the check out.
We have any, um, kin kind, uh, very responsible receivers?
On this one, no.
Okay, so this is all those, cause, uh, I'm still looking to see maybe.
I, I could even look after the, like, on what the breakdown order to ask you.
In this package?
Yes. It's there under. Yep. So do we get, do we have apps on that? We need to get that. Yeah, we need to, absolutely, wow, just, everybody's made it to eleven seventy, don't they? The, the art valley, uh, it was.
Well, that's a good basketball.
Was, yeah. Uh, did we give bids, other bids on that one?
Yes.
I just took some.
Yeah, that's why you're playing two now with this. It was actually space two on that.
Well, that was in the region.
Yeah. Well, got in, the original one was for a hundred and eight, there was a baseball field. It's just space two, which is part of the whole package, right? Everything we got grants for and all that.
They, but there was a bid for all of them, right? Also another bid.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, next, uh, funding structure for DCO AC. Uh, this mail I know you, I simply updated pretty much for the request, I updated the, the version that we were, the, were published. Um, there's this, if you have any more, go forward. Please do that. The only thing that I can cross was online, that is, uh, call us in the MB, it is dot org. Or you can follow us, send me a special address, dot org. That's. The only thing that, uh, knowledge that can, uh, about the situation, uh, and. I'm gonna change it. Anything else, boy?
I think it works good.
So we probably, I'm not sure, uh, I don't know what you're going to put this show, which we do, but we need to consider publishing that. We have to look.
That was the news.
All right, anything else? All right, and we do. It gets easier. In order for the business of the board to be developed and both the parties, I left you some time to prepare for all questions, but in hand, the minutes, go to a door, grab and show. How much of your decision or request will not be part of salary given of order can release of the same construction instead of running out of steps. Such behaviors will constitute the property of your right to remain in tennis and may take one more to draw to the board's attention by counsel or any board member, including the judge. These officers will have to read the reading by a trip or on the approval of the best sort of other meeting by the law.
You know, you skip, uh, CPA, see, we just.
Oh, I did skip that. Okay. I didn't want to interrupt you, you were on the roll. And that would guys be good. All right. DCA, so you do, you have a shed and a fence on Chulessa and a fence just on the corner of that, uh, in truth. For global. Is used for them? And should be all of the impacted area is flat land, everything else, all permitted, these are unpaid. But then they love. Uh, also I guess, uh, CPA DC, I did your email back and Terry, he is warranting we are, we're gone. So as a, got off the. Roundtable, according to roundtable of trouble county, Terry is willing to give a little bit. We still have what to do on that, but that's, you know, we, we did respond.
Okay, I'll talk to you about that.
Okay? Oh. All right. So this is me, but you got it. We didn't see it. We got, we got it, we got, we got it. We would have a very fine up. Yeah. We don't have any more kinds of, you know? Okay? The problem, the question. The open, the opening, the closing, my phone has it, it's been a night, but we tried, uh, on six, thirty, you can join us, but we. I thought we can see, uh, and say somewhere, and two republic, poverty sales on nation. Neither. And as we join in the moment, John, and I should, one of our board members, that's ongoing, Hertz, who may be on the street, but underwent a protest earlier today. And, uh, think about it, we are thinking about it, wishing you best. Well, if you join a moment, Simon's left, and she's, I choose. Thank you. Well, volunteer, that means we have a phone. We have one, don't remember shoes. And I get approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the agenda. Second.
Who's the second? All papers say aye.
Aye, aye, suppose.
Seven ten. Now about two over minutes. Ready?
Um. I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to approve, to start the discussion.
Right. Move and start the discussion.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I, I remember it's on the last page of the minutes, uh, for the regular meeting, uh, under item fourteen, under correspondence. We had new business at that meeting where we had addressed, uh, the, uh, concern about the, an entity that wanted to be excluded from AOS fees. Um, it was called, uh, Assure LLC. And, and Assure LLC wanted to be, uh, excluded from AOS fees. Do you, do you guys remember that? And, uh, so that was under new business, uh, uh, we voted to decline, uh, the request to be, for that entity to be, to be excluded. And it appears in the minutes as a, under correspondence, I guess, it just says, Mr. Collins, portion to deny the request, but he doesn't mention.
No part.
Of the request, what, what was going on there? So if we could just, uh, get that cleared up.
Okay. Okay. So we need an amendment to your motion. If, uh, would you accept an amendment to your motion to approve the minutes?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to remove my motion.
When, I do remove the second.
Yeah, I'll remove the second.
Right.
And then, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the amended minutes.
With the, with the sure LLC.
Yeah, with, with Ezra Askens, with the sure LLC motion, uh, defunct and the denial of the request. And, uh, that would be for.
Section fourteen.
Yeah, section fourteen, I'm looking for the date there, though.
Eight, boy.
Eight, boy. As like for those minutes.
Is that okay with you, sir?
Yeah.
Bill can tap into, you know, the discussion. All right, let's go. Volunteer the fair eye.
Aye.
Forward. And ended, minutes approved. About Bill Fairmore.
If the chairman make a motion to approve those.
Circle. Will be tapped in this document. I don't have the book to prepare to beat up on. Well, like.
She can hear you.
She can hear you.
Be careful.
Uh, really, I, I don't see much of a problem, the other van. Pro shop. Not forget. What the heck's going on there?
They're replacing windows.
There's six hundred and eighty-eight doors and not forget.
And well, you gotta open that, take the old window out and since it's, then it's new in the way and it's sealed. So what is that, you go? It goes outside. How far along are the other, when it was placed?
They've got all of the front from the foyer west. And we've worked on the pro shop. I think they've got Mike's window, it brings office and two of the other ones. And then the two on the side here, so it's, it's come along really well, actually. The shirts don't move when the wind blows. It isn't, so if you think that, uh, high gas cost is, it wasn't that whole.
Well, but you still have a lot of heat pots every time you open it up. And when they've been working on it two weeks now. I just wonder how much of it is because it's a restaurant.
Well, they have their own meter.
They had their own, I, but you told me that.
Yeah.
And like I said, if you look at those sliding glass doors in the restaurant side, you, they're afraid to open them because glass is gonna fall out of them. They got that, and that's why we're replacing all of that and moving forward.
We're gonna have to.
Yeah.
But don't worry. And my money to see what's going to be extra. This probably would be an over time to, uh, to say, Ethan, Ray was charging us too much.
Holy cow.
You will be, you will be surprised, don't we have to?
That's actually.
That's all I have, actually. So anybody else have anything? Not acceptable. Well?
Yes.
Girl?
Yeah.
Right?
Yes.
I'm terrible for that, okay, good.
I can't forget.
Hey, we do have a financial report.
Yes, you do.
Uh, this was a summary for, uh, March as to what we produced and what we built for. And I believe you're the count, last meeting was ten million.
Yeah, we.
The March of the day, it was, uh, fifteen.
It was thirteen, fifteen million.
And we, we are able to count for five million, one foot more. So that's part of this leak detection. Uh, we did, on that aspect, vague and in the, did on the other, uh, ramp side of it, we tried other valves. We, we, we're at that point now, we're, we're gonna have to really shut them off, people to go down the line to see where the waters go from. Uh, Kyle has been very helpful and helping with this, the landowners. So, uh, let's just find the time in between, have all the different projects that are going on. Uh, if you look, I put in the, the summaries for what we have from two thousand twenty-three and then when we raised rates as in two thousand twenty-four. And then also where we're at for two thousand twenty-five. For the summaries that I know, uh, Mr. Davis was interested in all of that.
Yeah. I was wondering about the, the data that I received this afternoon. Um, and I was looking at what I call Ray's line about water production and billable. Uh, and it looked like our billables went down. Uh, if I nixed it that right, and I'm not sure I did, but if I looked at it right, it looked like our billables went down in the first quarter, seventy, seventy thousand dollars.
Hmm. Actually, the, the water side went down, uh, four thousand.
Okay, I'll, I'll.
On, on January, and then, yeah.
I was gonna talk with Christie about that because I didn't understand that new set of data we got out today for the quarter.
Oh.
Anyway, well, I'll talk to her a little bit, yeah.
Any other comments, questions about for financial report? All right, move on, Jim. Okay. Next, let's go, yeah, operational reports. Yeah, I'm gonna get into my section one. Okay, dam measurements, I did have, uh, dam inspection on last Wednesday. Thursday was the day.
Thursday.
It was Thursday. Uh, we introduced Mr. Perry to Adam and also Alan, who was doing our, our, uh, the reports. And we walked through everything and said everything is pretty much the same, except we have one little job around the weir that we had to pack some gravel in. And we're getting that done, uh, to satisfy that. First, I have a meeting tomorrow or Thursday with Tracy and Mr. Perry, uh, about, uh, who did have a meeting with FEMA. And there's some information on there that, that they were worried about. When we applied for the grant, uh, I asked for the three point eight million dollars and it was gonna be forty-five percent of it. Which they're saying now that since we are adding, uh, to the dam and not just doing the safety requirements. We wanna know the difference of what phase one was and what, or option one and option two is, which was about five hundred thousand dollars difference. And what they're going to do with it is looking because cost of the inflation and everything, uh, we're going to talk about that. All these numbers have increased, so I don't think we need to increase or decrease our amount because it's gonna cost us the same just to make it safe. That's on that. Okay, late back with measurements or weekly report. Uh, you can look, we, we were up to fourteen eight, we were down, down to fourteen five, water runoff, which is really good. The only bad thing is it is very muddy. So a lot of it, we're, essentially are pretty much full. Uh, we are letting it go to the pond and wherever it can take off the river that has water rights, we allow that to go out. Uh, as soon as it starts to clear up and if, uh, I, like I said, I talked to Mr. Perry about taking our, uh, restriction, pre-striction off during the runoff. And, uh, after our discussion, probably Thursday, uh, we're looking at, he's gonna have that, the app for description up until August, like we did in the last. So we go up to fifteen five, we can go back to fifteen five up until August and, uh, for that, uh. The, uh, I can't think, um, he's texting me, he might have mine down. Um, so as per, uh, his own readings, they are within, uh, within four, one or within one. So he wasn't worried about it, he went through all of that. Uh, he was with us the whole time he did it all, so he doesn't feel that clearly what she said. And also we did give, if you notice, there was a lockup for surveying mon- monuments. We got that taken care of. So I just got the report last night and, uh, like I said, sent it back. Uh, and, uh, like I said, please, we'll let us know. So when we have this meeting with, uh, the engineer with the Tracy, you're gonna beat on it a little bit about.
Well, and hopefully everyone beat on it, too. It gets going, we're, we're tired of waiting. We need to get the, and that's one of the things, he says, I don't really care about the control survey and all these other surveys. Just get the diagrams and stuff that needs to be in so that, think about that and get the engineering approved through the state. And as, as those things come through, then, then we're good.
So he will talk to her about that as well.
Yeah.
Okay, we need some pressure on her and. Okay. Okay. Uh, like I said, uh, there was a, uh, there was a, um, request for, for funds were used into, uh, the ball field project. That is what is here. After you were the funding and making up, we, uh, do the ball field project.
Thank you for that.
Sure. And that's all I have for operations. Any, uh, you still have the old trick set up at time in the water line.
Like they say, burn, breaks, losing sleep over that.
Don't do that.
No, let, like, become a mission.
I appreciate your effort. Okay. So the next we have is, or can you use your car? I'll need to get in the last section, you can even ask the question, yes, we are.
Just say it's last meeting in person.
It's nice to meet you in person, so for anyone who hasn't met me, I'm Carolyn, so I know I've met a lot of people in the room over, uh, the last eight years or however many years it's been.
Yeah.
Um, but it's great to be here. So, but I thought I could just give you an update if you have any questions. I mean, one of the main things I've been working with, with Jim. I mean, one of the main things I've been working with, with Jim, um, Daniel in my office and the engineer, which is trying to get the water treatment project out and about. And so, we entered into the stipulation with the state for the enforcement action that said we would start the project either within, I think, a hundred and maybe days of the design approval or by the end of this year. And so, we're very confident of that deadline and looking at three different funding options. So, we have most near both that they're offered most favorable. So, we're having meetings with, by the financing underwriters to see what they would project for financing of the project. We are still working on, at this point, we have not heard anything from the USDA on our application. And our application for the S R F loan is beginning of June. So, we will probably be applying all of the funding for the project from that S R F loan at this point. Well, the USDA's prises us in the next thirty days. And, um, and then looking at private financing as a backup option. So, we have monthly calls with the state. We hope they're always thinking on top of this project and let's try to keep it moving forward as best we can, given a really unknown financing situation nationwide, so.
One of the, one of the things that we've been dealing with too is if we use grant funding that is federal, your expectations and your costs increase tremendously. Because you have, you have, uh, you're double up, you have that extra that you have. You have also engineering costs that they've gotta be there on site and all of that kind of stuff. So, we're looking at the private financing also in that aspect as, is it worth the interest rate? Because we're gonna still have to finance a good portion of it. And then give us a whole hundred million dollars to do. So, that's what we're trying to weigh out too. Is it worth going the way of grants and doing that? And a lot of the ground stuff that we are doing is hopefully, if we give it, we give it. But if not, you know, we're looking at that backup plan. That is good. Jim probably about to say you are. Other questions?
Federal funding is pretty much dry now, I think.
No. I have the public hearing, public hearing. Uh, they really good with, uh, Representative Hurd. So, she sent me a letter of support and stuff for their discretionary funds, which we talked about discretionary funds and it's only up to a maximum of like two million dollars or something. And.
I know our call like the limit is, but that's the congressional discretionary funds, which will only apply if the federal government adopt the budget.
Yes.
So, it's really, that one is, is, you know, it's kind of high risk, high reward. If they adopt the budget and you get approval, you could get a lot of funding. But at this point, we're under continuing resolutions for the federal government. We don't have a button to back it. And so.
That's been a lot of the problem with USDA and even our vulnerable fund was that they don't know what their funding is gonna be for it. Okay, well, we might, every time they extend the, the, the budget and that kind of stuff, it continues to. So, we're gonna pay in the eyes of the state.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, yes.
And they understand it. They understand how we're at.
Yeah. Um, so in terms of the legal fees, this is a bubble because once we get, once we get the funding approval, the project approval, I don't wanna be back to sailing.
I, I'm a, I'm kind of a tight one. But I understand.
Thank you.
Kinda.
I may not have been on that thirty-four dollar ranch.
So, any other legal questions over here?
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to the D R lines. Okay, we have public hearing for, it's like, do we have the shift? Me and Mel went to public hearing.
Oh, no, the opposite, public, public.
All right.
Yeah.
Let's see if you can something.
Executive session, but public hearing is, yeah.
Okay. Okay, public hearing for water shut-off, uh, fifty-three oh nine, Cibola Drive, asking, uh, for the draft board by Morikai, Morikai, Fabias. Uh, yes, I'm gonna have that. Yeah, let's turn this over to Henry. I'm just gonna move.
Yeah, you're gonna have the opportunity to present anything, which I'll explain the order and then Jim's gonna explain the background from the district's perspective and then we'll be, if you have to, we'll present. Thanks.
Go ahead, Jim.
How else does this thing works?
We have this format of the order.
Okay. So, we've opened up public hearing. I wanna just give you a little bit of background of a process that we're gonna use for the public hearing because we don't have these that frequently. So, this is a quasi judicial public hearing of an appeal by Morikai Valdez of a notice of water shut-off for a property located at fifty-three oh nine Cibola Drive in Colorado City, which notice was dated April twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. And the process we're gonna follow is first, Jim McCarry as the district manager will make a presentation about the reason why that notice of shut-off was given and the rules that the district leaders were violated. And that if there's any other district representative, that would be the time when they would speak. At that point, Mr. Morikai will have the opportunity to speak, present any testimony or evidence that he'd like to present. Then the directors can ask any questions they have of either the district representatives or the property owner. And then, at that point, this is a public hearing. We will call for, if there are any members of the public present who would like to give us, give public comment, they're welcome to do that. Just like in the public comment section, um, we'll ask for the same rules of decorum and not do our overlap of comments that are already been said to be extent possible. And those comments will be eliminated in three minutes per speaker. Okay, so that's the process we're gonna follow. And then the board will be asked to make a determination of whether there is a rule violation and if so, whether you would like to, um, to shut off the water, to affirm that determination to shut off the water. And there's a proposed order in the, in your, Mr. Packard, in case you'd like to make that. So, just a little more background. Um, so how it got there, the district provided a notice of violation for end water shut-off and opportunity to request a hearing on the shut-off on April twenty-fourth. Through the requirements of Rule twelve point four, Morikai Valdez, who's a resident on the property and by information and belief, a relative of the owner, Ruben Valdez, requested a public hearing by emailing Jim McCarry and then Jim providing the notice at this time and place of this public hearing. So, this matter is properly before the board and ready for you to hear evidence and make a determination. The district is authorized to terminate water, to shut off water service and discontinue water service for any violation of the rules and regulations of the special district and to provide for the connection or disconnection from facilities of the district under section, under the Colorado Special District Act, authorized statute, section thirty-two, one, one oh oh six, one D. So, the first question is making a determination whether there is a violation of the rules and regulations of the special district. The second determination is, uh, and then under the district's rules, you've also adopted similar standards, Rule twelve point one, twelve point two and twelve point four relate to termination of water service. And so, twelve point one says, no unauthorized person shall turn on service or recover or make any connection or reconnection with or opening into, extend, use, alter or disturb the public water or say, to remain facilities or pertinences or fail to comply with these rules and regulations or construct a main line extension without first obtaining written permit from the district, paying all applicable fees that compliance would put up the legs. And then twelve point two says, in the case of violation of that section, the district fair revoked service, disconnect, turn off service. Require the responsible person to disconnect or return and require the responsible person to return the district system to its original condition and shall require payment of all applicable fees and charges provided by these rules and regulations and all costs associated with violation, including any expenses lost, damage or earnings fees occasioned by such violation by the responsible person prior to the district providing any service to the property or the facility only pleased to offer. And then twelve point four also talks about residence revocation of service. Service shut-off revoked by the district on non-human fees or charges upon failure to comply with the rules and rights or when the district manager, superintendent or representative chose an emergency exist and such revocation of the security bathroom. In this circumstance, it is, wait, um, shut off is recommended by this rule. The, once the district, uh, for the board will make a determination by the violation of the rules, if so, should the water service be shut off until that rule violation is protected. They also impose those breathing costs and equitability charges upon the person who you find created the violation. And your decision will be final. The packet for today includes a statement of facts that was drafted by the district manager. I don't think it does who drafted it, but that's, that was the statement that, um, Jim drafted. And it also includes two letters that were provided to the owner resident dated August thirtieth, twenty twenty-four and April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. In the packet on the website, I think only half of the pages were copied with the, uh, it was developed by the document. So, you have in your packet the full copies of the letter and I will, um, incorporate that summary fact and those two letters into the record for this public view. So, that's you have. Okay, and we're now gonna turn it over to District Manager Jim McCarry to make a presentation.
Okay, public hearing, uh, for shut-off on fifty-three oh nine, Cibola Drive. Uh, today is four twenty-nine, twenty twenty-five. Existed provided water for sitting up there on the home of favor at fifty-three oh nine, Cibola Drive. Uh, April of twenty twenty, home was destroyed in an explosion at which time a lot of service was turned off, uh, at the water meter in the public toilet. In approximately August of twenty twenty-three, the district received a report from neighbors that owner was dating to connect to the existing water line. District representative observed a escalator backfill on property consisting of extending service lines. The district had no review and approved any plan for extension of the service line and was not provided opportunity to inspect the service line before they were back there. The meter and meter pit are called out of the metro district and is not to be accessed by anyone except C C N D of one. In October of twenty twenty-three, it was brought to our attention that the water service to the property had been turned on without notification of the office that you wanted service without having an authorized representative of the district turn on the water. We confirmed that unauthorized water use, then that had occurred when district employees in November of twenty twenty-three inspected the water meter for, for the property and found that the amount of water use had increased from the time that the water service was shut off when the resident house exploded. Therefore, the water was again shut off. November of twenty twenty-three, Ruben, uh, came in to the district office, talked to me and requested the water to turn back on. At that time, he explained I had time to rebuild the home. I agreed to attempt for the water service, turn the water back on. Uh, by August of twenty twenty-four, it became clear that the property owner was not planning to build a single family home in the New York, and not within New York required under Rule five point ten point one. Therefore, the district provided written notice that it was terminating the temporary water recently shut off, shut off the water unless the property owner, owner applied for a variance in compliance with the all district rule. The notice letter was sent out via certified mail to both residents' addresses in Roma and Gopiel Box, Amity Town, stating that the water would be shut off. Neither of the letters were collected or signed to explain the violation to the park and a connection to the water system. Uh, but I was able to hand deliver the notice to Ruben and Morikai, uh, Valdez on their driveway at that time. Morikai, uh, Ruben asked me to get off this property that notice stated that the property owner could appeal within ten days. The property owner did not appeal and did not submit a variance application. We were contacted by lawyer that stated that he was representing Morikai Valdez. He had asked for an extension of the shut-off date to the fifteenth of April, which had been granted to, to resolve the issue that had a concern of the district. The lawyer was contacted by the district general counsel able to level out, which time he stated that he was no longer representing Morikai in this matter. We then sent the last letter to Ruben and Morikai that the water would be shut off on May fifth for violation of rules of the district, which was certified mail to Roma address and it was posted on the property right away at the entrance of the property. The district has concluded that for property, property violations, the following rules. Violation rules, four point one, four point two and four point four requiring to connect the district sewer system and properly test sewage by building. Sewer service lines without inspection and using septic system without inspection and variance. Unlawful to deposit waste in, uh, section four point one. Unlawful to deposit waste in an unsanitary manner. It is unlawful for any person to place deposit or permit to be deposited in any unsanitary manner on public or private property within the district. Any human instrument, uh, garbage or other objective role waste. Uh, sewage must be treated. It is unlawful to discharge to any natural outlet or surface or subsurface system within the district. Any sewer or other polluted waters except for an suitable treatment has been provided for in accordance with these laws and regulations. Violation four point, five point four point one, six point three and six point five. By backfilling water in sewer service lines extensions without allowing for inspection by the district and by inspecting such lines without using an approved contractor. Five point four point one, water, the customer's contractor shall fully expose existing water lines so the district can install the water tap. The customer's contractor shall install the service line from the district's installed water tap to the property line and shall not backfill until the district has approved the installation. Six point three inspection, the application for the water and sewer service line connection permit to the public system. The connection and testing shall be made under the supervision of the district representative. The entire length of the trench contained the suit service line from the building to the public system or a main line extension shall not be backfilled and determined inspection as been made by the district representative. Uh, the owner will continue to be responsible for any costs, expenses or damage resulting from improper connection or construction. Contractor qualifications, all contractors and subcontractors shall be approved by the district representative prior to commencing work on any power or sewer highway facilities, main lines or service lines within the district. Violation rule five point five, a transfer of water caps from single-family residents to a chicken group without district approval. Indication of, five point five, indication of service permits and connection permits. The service and connection permits issued to, uh, applicant are applicable only to the real state property and building or portion of the amount of space by on the permit. The permit shall be transferable for use. The permit shall be transferable for use on other property, shall not be. Transferable for use on other properties or for use on other buildings or the same property unless authorized by the district. Violated rule three, uh, nine point four and rule nine point seven point two. By not submitting plans to the district for approval for construct before construction. Service nine point four, service permit. Any person requesting service shall file a service permit application on hold acceptable fees. For all structures other than the single-family residence, the only funds should be submitted. Which must include building requirements for potable water, fire protection, and sewer. Upon approval by the district, a cap permit number will be, well done, be issued to the owner. In each case, no service shall be allowed until the cap be had been made. Connection nine, nine point seven. Nine point seven point two, connection permit application. Now, connection permit will be issued until the application form properly completed, definitely and signed. Have been filled by the district by owner or taken. Prior to approval of the application, the application shall submit and have approved by the district, the engineer designed construction plan. But proposed service line connects. Violation of rules eleven point one and eleven point two, by ordering me off of the property when I entered. Right away to perform district business and prohibited inspection of the water and sewer with several design property. Eleven point one, power and authority of inspectors. The district manager, superintendent, and representative with them proper credentials. Identification shall be required to enter all private property within the district for the purpose of reading meters. And testing related discharge of public system inspection, observation, measurement, sampling. Excuse me, repair, maintenance, and any portion of the water or sewer facilities lying within the said properties and related manner. Eleven point two, construction inspection, district manager, superintendent, or representative shall have the right. To inspect any and all water during construction to ensure insulation in accordance with district standards. After completion of construction of water or sewer lines, the district superintendent or his representative. Shall make a final inspection of construction as provided in section six point three and seven point seven. Violation of rules nine point eleven and twelve point one. As well as stated statute by turning on water service to the property instead of requesting. That the district turn on the water unauthorized connection fee under ninety point one. An unauthorized connection penalty shall be payable by person connecting to a district line without prior payment of. Cap fees or inspection fees. Approval of connection permit or adequate inspection of the lines. Shall the district determine that disconnection or turnoff of service is necessary because of. Unauthorized connection prior to connection or trimming of service. All unauthorized connection fees and any other outstanding fees or charges. A reconnection fee and all costs associated with such disconnection and reconnection must be paid. Twelve point one. Prohibitions, no unauthorized person shall turn on service from uncover, make any connection or reconnection with. Opening the N Q, extend, use, alter, or disturb any public water or sewer main facilities or. Procuriances or fail to comply with these rules and regulations or. Construct a new line extension without first obtaining a written permit from the district. Paying all acceptable fees and charges and complying with all. Terms of rules and regulations of the district. It is in my belief that water should be shut off to the property until the new violations are remedied. We are still in need of applying for service permit. For non-single-family residential use, uh, submit plans of water line. Explain proposed use and. Submit building plans if for other than a single-family home exposed of service line that was not inspected by the district to allow inspection. Number two is submit variance request to allow for continued septic. System use, inspect and submit testing and portus. Septic system to confirm that it was properly functioning and it was not damaged during the explosion or otherwise. Allow Colorado City Metro District access, access on property for inspections. All this addressed in the letter dated April twenty-third. Four or twenty-five, I'm sorry, beneath the rules and regulations of the district. It is in my opinion that it poses a risk to the district system and the environment. Allow water connection that have not been viewed and inspected. And septic system which has not been inspected to confirm they they are functioning correctly. Therefore, I issued the notice of water shut off and asked the board to find that there. Were rule violations and the water would should be shut off until the violations are remedied.
So now it's my turn. I'll go ahead and let you guys know what order I'm going to follow because I didn't know what order. There would be enough, makes sense to let you know as well. Uh, I have bullet points that I'm going to go through. Has some nuances that make sense to talk about something showing. First, as I intended to, uh, but thinking that I would speak first, uh, then I would just. What was stated. That will be my order. Couple things first is because this is semi quasi judicial or the terminology. That you use, it becomes incredibly important to talk about, um. Being impartial, complex of interest. Unlawful bias and prejudice and in that way, I will trust what you both Neil and Ray choose. But I want to make the point though, if you can't commit to being impartial, then you should recuse yourself when I bring it up. Because Neil at at my property line told me that he believed because I would not. Give access to him or the agricultural committee, Bob. That would therefore imply that I had something to hide or something wrong. I have a right to privacy and certainly that extends even to the Bill of Rights when you talk about things like. Warrants needed for search, the fact that I would want to keep my rights intact from not exposing anybody. Into my building for inspection, any kind of that cause. Is certainly not somehow, uh, meaning that I. And hiding something or guilty of something. And so trusting might be worth. Move past that and being impartial here, that's fine, but if you can't like move that portion, I'm going to. I'm asking you to accuse yourself likewise of rape, was been on my other property line with Bob from the. Agricultural community at one point in time telling me that my camper taught me about different property.
True, you are wrong, mistaken, but I've never been there.
You and Bob together.
No, sir.
I'll let that to go. If it wasn't you and I am misunderstanding who it was, then my error and my apology both.
In any case, I will promise you that I will be impartial.
Perfect, yeah. The others are a thing I have, which I wasn't anticipating today is your fifth board member is not here tonight. And I hope that all things with this help go well. It does create a question about fairness when he might potential. If it was a for vote, be vote, be a tie-breaking vote. That could be in my favor if, you know, hypothetically that were the case. And I don't want to be disadvantaged, so I don't know what the solution to that is, but there should be something. Okay, so moving beyond that. Um, let me introduce myself. I'm the Mr. Monica Valdez and the land in question that we're talking about is the same land. That I grew up on in all my childhood. Um, it is land that the memories of my mother. Uh, throughout my childhood and into graduating high school happened on. And I lost my mom in a medical emergency in two thousand nineteen at a young age of fifty-eight. So it's especially meaningful to me when I am spending time on my land with. To be there for all of us in that other aspect that is a bonus to the primary of being agricultural. Um, not only did I grow up there and my mom. Uh, memories exist from that place. My grandfather himself was the patriarch to the surname I have Valdez. He was the first in my family to go by that last name because he lost his, um. Dad, he was orphaned and, uh, with his stepfather, I'm down there, so we ended up freaking out. So he died at home on the same property we're talking about. And, uh, I bring that up because it's meaningful to me, though we'll get to other points more applicable to this. And additionally, when it comes to, um, the type of citizens I and my father and my family have been throughout generations. Not only are we indigenous of Hickory Apache, and this land in this area itself. Was from time immemorial, uh, the land of Hickory Apache, that was the Hickory Apaches that. Came with the Colorado weeds in order to defeat the, uh, Comanche Quinavert, which Greenhorn. Some of the things in there are named after ones in the United States on point, uh, to defeat him. And so it was the Hickory Apache who helped in our regard. Additionally, my father served in the Iraq, his father in World War Two, his father in World War One. So we are not citizens, not with good reasons. But we have stood by countless ways to include, um, the meaningfulness of existing natural sciences before the boundaries of tribal fields since. The attorney, uh, Ms. Staub, she, one of the things I wrote down that she said. She, the only thing I adjust until we get to the third part, is how we got here and, uh. Her answer to that, uh, was not entirely transparent or or accurate to all the things. How we got here, um, in this process specifically started with. A meeting with you guys and the county commissioners, in which it was suggested. That, uh, water be shut off as a means to get people or the campers off their properties. When they have campers on them, uh, according to that meeting, I have a link as evidence, if you wanted to listen to it, I'm sure you guys know that's true. It was three days later when I got my first, uh, letter from Jim Eckert, which he trespass my land to hand deliver. Uh, and, um, and so that connection is obviously there. Uh, not only is it there through that logic, it actually is in that first letter. That is reasonably claimed in order to shut off my water was including that he stated he believed I or my father are living in somewhere camp, which we are not. Um, and so that and his claim that the water turn on was only temporary. Which is also not the case, now others, that we don't get to him to get there. Um. When it was determined at some point in time that it would be unlawful to pursue that course. Then I got the second letter with new reasons, which came, uh, the day following, especially me here last week where we talked about trying out water. So obviously, um, there was a change made, but that's how we got here is that we started with something else. This really ultimately is a type of charades, uh, that, that, that hinges on a different parcel with a camper on it. Being the primary issue that has Jim, um, wanting to shut off my car. Uh, on that note, just to include, because it's worth knowing, I was at, uh, Pueblo County. Planning and development just yesterday and in their most recent adopted land use and land rights. Section of Title seventeen, they even have a graphic to go along with it. Both the designation of my parcel and my father's have used by right to include using a recreational vehicle. For temporary housing and they include by right primitive camping. Um, now, I don't say that because I'm saying I'm doing that with my camper, I'm not, but I'm saying that even if that was the case. It is a use by right. Um, in regard to trespassing, Jim, as he discussed in reasons according to code. To be on property has to do with meters and testing and sampling and, uh, inspecting and all those things that's not included. Hand delivering the letter, uh, and that is both times that Jim has trespassed my land. And that he was made aware beforehand and after him, that he is not welcome on my land for those reasons. And I do not want him trespassing. He manipulates law enforcement who I assume trusts in his position. But he's being honest when he asks for a civil standby. But a civil standby is not right to have a badge behind you, give the appearance of lawlessness while you trespass. I would not be trusted that way, but if I tried getting a civil standby. To watch him trespass a building that I was trespassed from because I wanted to hand deliver the letter. I would be denied the power in those things. Uh, and so I want to be clear to the board, I need you guys to hold him accountable for not trespassing my, trespass my line, especially. Since most recently he vandalized the line itself by sticking this stake. And disturbing the dirt in order to have his letter, uh, was taped to it and the window. Now, two things, uh, we have a postal service, federal postal service. If there is a letter that was to be delivered to me, that is the means that we do that. If there is a legal document that needs to be served to me, there's a process for that in which there are legal people who serve. And you should employ somebody to do that, but because you want to either pretend. To be a legal server or the postal service is not giving right to be on my land that way. And it is insulting and it is also a form of harassment to trespass my land just because you believe you can get away with it. I do not want you on my land and except for, and I'm sure even then you could find others. The articulated reasons according to code like meter access, testing, sampling, those various things. Now that's in regard to trespass. Okay, now. Another thing to point out is that the reasonings according to the letters for. Shutting off my water were changed into two letters and by doing so, it doesn't comply with. Rules themselves and it certainly disrupts the actual due process of this. Because now for the second letter, instead of being a thirty-day notice, for example, I have a much shorter notice. And so, uh, even in your own rules and regulations in this process, because you have done such. Uh, your hands are unclean in parry de l'icto. Uh, you are saying that you're enforcing code while you yourself are breaking. Um, that is to be noted. Okay, so although this is ultimately charades over a different issue to address it. And although it is in parry de l'icto, unclean hands. Uh, let's do so, that's what we're here for now. And I trust and assume that the board is even was affirmed in language by Ray, is going to be held biased. Um, and being a quasi judicial, I would expect that such hours justice would demand it. And that ever makes sense to, uh, that the board would be interested in being lawful. Because that can prevent the suit against whole of C C M D or the individual members. And this board and Jim, uh, professionally and personally, if it were to go to court. Uh, but better than that, I assume the integrity of the case. So let's start with, uh, the, the address is fifty-three oh nine, Saba Drive. Unit and lot number, which is meaningful, unit three, lot three, P six. That is meaningful because it is according to zoning, A four, A four. Is agricultural. Agricultural land, the building on it is an agricultural building and I have agricultural life. All those things are used by right. According to the land, it's zoning and the building and the chickens themselves. Those things exist as facts. There is a right to water, we have agricultural land and a tap already established. An agricultural building and agricultural life. Not to mention. Not to mention for the health and sanitation of me as on the land at times and my father, which will be agricultural life and the father, we are free to use that water for our sanitation and health. Also have the right to be on our land as often as we choose because it is our land. The tap itself has been there and established since the mid nineties from a court order and costing the Metro fifty thousand dollars to my father's attorney at that time because same land, same land owner and same issue of water. It was provably in court at the Metro Board at that time. It's not an accusation of you guys, but it is part of the issue. Was provably biased against my dad over the skin color and it cost him before fifty thousand dollars and they didn't want to provide him water because they'd rather he be somewhere else at that time. So with that lens, that, that tap has been here for that amount of time. And we are not talking about the codes that apply to when a tap is installed. We are talking about shutting off water service. Our service is not only, not only is the tap line services presently on. Okay, so in regard to pass the right to water on agricultural land with the tap and with agricultural life and agricultural building, when service is begun, that implies a contract legally, that's a legal term, implied contract. It implies consent, implied consent is a legal term. It implies assurance of eligibility. Assurance of eligibility is saying that when the water was turned on by Jim, it was an acknowledgement at that point to say that my eligibility for water wasn't tapped to enter that contract and to consent to. So that being in November of two thousand and twenty-three, talking about greater than a year. To say that since then I have stepped out of compliance with code, with code would be inaccurate. And if I was out of compliance prior to that, then it should have been on the onus to not give me water, which even so was not the case. I was not out of compliance then, which is why it was turned off. We are talking about the lawfulness of when and how water is shut off, not the codes about new construction when this is as it's been since the mid nineties. Revelation of service rules according to the Metro's own rules, which were brought up and to some degree hold with by the attorney, one point four, service shall be revoked by the district upon non-payment of fees is one, one reason. Not complying with the rules and regulations of the district is two. And the other is the district manager determines, determines that emergency exists and it was already clarified, the claim is the second. In order for that to hold up, it would have to be a violation of those rules and regulations post having service because the service in and of itself assumes the compliance of those rules and regulations also were not, they shut off. Not only that, not only can you not connect a line, install a new line and attach it while service is on, because that was for sure in case nobody's done that. I have just used the water and paid for the water that was turned on with the bill that I auto pick it every month. And so any allegation would have to be before that. And although that the service turn on implies that assurance of eligibility, to be clear, the water line in question has been as it is now since before the current ownership. Nobody, my father nor myself has installed a line as Jim alleges. And those allegations to be judicially warned, you have to be allegations, they need evidence to be meaningful in any regard. And there is none because that is not the case. I will get to what he said and what I have to say in response to that when I reach that point. But to be clear, the line has been since before current, since before current ownership, since before the house blew up, because when my dad bought the land back on auction, it was already the case. And if my memory serves me correct, it's since the mid nineties, when I was a child, my memory serves me right, we had the water to that building at that time. Whether that was done whatever way my dad did it or not, I wouldn't know at that time. I was young. But I can tell you that my memory seems to have that in it, but at least before fact, since before the house blew up. I'm not liable for the actions prior to the current ownership in that way and especially considering all the different owners that serviced the property with water between my dad's first ownership and current with having water on and not having been revoked for those reasons, for those same set reasons, that statute of limitation is certainly passed. Also concerning again, those codes, codes regarding what an inspection is for and its purpose is to verify proper line functionality, that is affirmed by the current working service consistent with the bills and pressure data reflecting no issue or reason for concern. Jim says that he is determining that there is some kind of risk after a year of service when from month to month to month to month, there are no presenting data that says there is risk or that the line is not functioning. I have a water bill consistent with what would make sense to be watered to a tiny ab building on an ab crop. So an inspection is altogether moot as it proves itself and especially because it's post-fap bill and more so asserted unlawfully and in bad faith, as these are just reasons dug up in order to address the camper issue as started from the March meeting at that time. And again, this can remind me, implied contract, implied consent, implied assurance of eligibility. I don't want to distract so much on this water right issue that will leave the legality of the water service was turned on. And it is still on, we're talking about for this law, to have it turned off. In order to have it turned off, I would have to violate the codes while service on because of that implied eligibility that is part. Water is life. As on this, this is no small thing. Agriculture is another word that we understand to be similar and coinciding with life, both plant and animal, and to take water away, water is right of the land in those circumstances and in that eligibility. We are talking about life, we're talking about life when it comes to sanitation and health with the property owners for this legal tap that was court ordered in the mid nineties. We're talking about life because my dad as property owner is both severely diabetic and has leukemia. And so water is special when he's on the land is needed for the sanitation on his injection. It's no small thing. I also have still here because so often both these, both these are often in the protests of indigenous peoples, because so often when indigenous people have been forced off the land, it's been through the means of trying to take away water, whether that is a happenstance, coincidence or more than that, I'm in the similar vote. And likewise, still here, whether it's only coincidence or not, is an often protest cry from indigenous people and I'm saying the same thing. I have a right to be on my land, that's with my father, and he will continue to be so, even if you want to off when we set off water and we have to think of the law, so stay dressed up. Still getting those points. In my points, the last thing I say, because I thought you would talk after the point and then I'll address this and then we'll have the question, but he said, with allegations comes a burden of proof to the one who is alleging. As accuser accusing me, we have to start with the burden of proof is on you. Just throwing out, you have broken all these codes without evidence is meaningless. I have evidence, those things I'll address as I get in here. For example, I have the service that's not under dispute, starting since November of two thousand and twenty-three. Let me get to my notes before I get off track. Okay. So in one of the quotes, as that was being read, read about what allows for revoking service. In order for service to be revoked at the breaking of a rule or regulation, because the reading said if such happened, you can revoke service, that would obviously improve that the service was happening at the time that the infraction happened. Again, we're not talking about any infractions since service. I address the two letters and the difference in between them. Jim says in regard to the idea that a line was unlawfully installed is that there were neighbors who saw an excavator consistent with the type of heavy equipment that would do that, that same excavator is consistent with the type of heavy equipment that would transgate dirt. And that is exactly what made my father have that done on that day is to flatten the section of dirt that we wanted to flatten. September, not only that, not only that, August twenty twenty-three, Jim says that neighbors were talking about this. So if in August twenty twenty-three, if that was a legitimate belief, again, we go back to the point of November twenty twenty-three, when water was turned on, if that was reason to not have water service, then water should not have been turned on and we know that that is just an attempt to make it a reason now. Because even so, November twenty twenty-three, which is three months afterwards, we turned on our. Septic, Jim quotes a lot of septic codes as well. I have for anybody who wants to see it, the nineteen ninety-six approval from Metro at that time for the septic at that time, which was installed at that time and has been hooked up as it is now since then as well. And so again, we're talking about an old point just a long time ago. To say that I need to dig up the dirt so you can look at the septic now would have been just a wrong for any prior owner after my dad, the first time he wrongly did some things. Approved and ordered running for nineteen ninety-six. On a note about the attorney that I had, he is no longer my attorney because he will therefore, if we end up going to court, I think that I'm unable to do this as I own, whether that's speechless or not. One of the things about it was somebody said that he reached out and responded to that first letter because he wanted to extend time to resolve things. I had hoped that he would communicate everything I am now. So I don't know how that could be happened, that was not just a wish. Spending time, I was just stopping an unlawful action, showing off the law. Not only do I have the approval documentation for the septic from the nineteen nineties, it was also that the Metro testified in court under oath that sewer on the land in question was impossible, is impossible, that countless amounts of concrete were poured at the intersection at the top of the hill under that dirt and for that reason, septic is not impossible. It was for that reason that the judge did not order sewer connections and why we have a septic. Although they ordered the water tap that had been paid for and the Metro didn't want to service. Again, we're not talking about installing water tap, the tap exists, it is here and the service is on. Again, structure, there is no construction, all codes that have to do with construction, there is no construction. We're talking about service and not water service. And guess that I wanted to say from there. Also, also I have a video on my phone of when my dad came in and I recorded it requesting service in November. And if you'd like me to play it now or later, there was no mention at any time that it would be temporary or that we were requesting service because we were going to rebuild the house. We asked for service in the same way that anybody else just says I want to ask service to be treated, I didn't even remember immunity. We said that and maybe you're not on service. We did not say it was temporary or that we were going to build a house. That would be like, oh. This is a copy of the septic approval from the nineties. Here is the first bill that has the date of service connection. I think I'll be having said all that, I think that's sort of important.
Okay, thank you. If you do want anything to be considered as evidence, then you do need to actually present it. So
Okay, let me
Question for the board. Well, yeah, if you want to present it, or we can ask the board if they'd like to. Is there a way to protect it? No.
It's not in the audio, I can put it right.
If you want it to be entered into the record, you need to submit it.
Yeah, might as well, huh? Might as well.
How long is it?
Couple minutes. Not very long because there's little thing we brought service and then. November twenty seventh.
Do you know the date of this? January ten?
November ninth.
Date of twenty twenty?
Twenty twenty-three, one twenty-eight P M.
Thank you. Is that way gone for life?
Six ninety seven. So my apologies, that's not what it is. One has a question, I have been searching for ages.
And your wifi, the wifi, you can hack it?
Uh, maybe.
Can I ask?
The wifi?
It's forgotten?
It's secure. Yeah, could you, am I allowed to use it? Can I use it? No, I it's secure, isn't it?
Yeah.
What, why not work?
Secure means you need a password or you mean secure is you don't want to give me the password because you don't want to access. Which I'm not saying you have to, I'm just
You know, he says that it is our secure wifi for our staff and I don't have a guest.
So you're saying no to me asking for the password?
Yes.
Okay. Welcome to the room. Can you have a question?
We have a question, before we go ahead, I'll ask Neil. You were asked a question whether you can unbiasedly consider this case and whether you can make a determination based on the information presented here. Can you answer that question?
No, I'm sorry, say it again.
The advocate asked whether you put unbiasedly consider this case and make a determination. Thank you.
Yeah, I could be unbiased.
Okay, it is now time for questions.
I do want to ask you a question. You mentioned their certified letters, certified letters were sent, correct? And were denied, want to sign for?
Oh yeah, I'm not, in that regard, I'm not obligated to talk to anybody.
But you suggested that they should.
Well, the mail has options besides cert.
Well, I'm just stating.
Understood.
Yeah, you suggested defend certified letters, you didn't.
No, I didn't suggest certified letters.
You suggested that great contact.
Suggested mailing through the postal service as a way to send letters to me. It has never been attempted, from my understanding, that Jim has ever tried to send a letter to me just via the post. Certified is one option the post office offers, but it is not the only option. And if it is one that presents me with an option to sign or not, I'm not obligated to sign. But Jim can send it regular mail, that would be one possibility.
He does have proof that he sent letters and you didn't sign from, so.
Right, right, that's how, so that's the beginning, it seems like you're being aggressive right now if you ever did.
No, I'm just, well, I'm just stating that we know that there were certified letters.
And I dispute that.
You denied that, so.
I'm saying I don't want Jim to trespass my land in order to hand deliver a letter. Regardless of what he has done or not done with legal service or with the postal. I'm saying I don't want him to trespass my land. That's what I'm saying to him. Do you have a question?
Another question, was in the first time that the. Discovered one and was turned on on operate, was there an active account at that time at all?
No.
Was there? Was there a possibility you thought about contacting the sheriff or a diversion issue?
No. In that regard, because I forgot to mention it, under I know my father had turned it on or told him to be teaching it on. Did discover it was on, used water, but that was remedied, then became in compliance. On the following month, it had only paid for that part of my service.
When was it, nobody knows when it was actually turned on?
I don't even know. It was, it was shut off when the house. Because.
But the turn on time was, so it could have been on for quite a while.
Right. It wasn't because the shirt, the part of it shut it off.
But when the house blew up. But there was no active account when it was turned back on.
Anything else, what?
Uh, and the first complaint was in August twenty twenty.
No, the first complaint was March.
No, from the first complaint, Weaver's.
Yeah, there was, there was.
There was excavation going on, so on the property, it's going on almost two years, yeah.
Yeah, and, and just equipment that excavates, you know. Proof or evidence of anything that is not a child, and I testify, I'm saying that is not outdoed. Which is also consistent with. Anything else, what?
No, I got one.
I have ten questions. Mr. Valdez, are you stating the back hole digging a ditch, except for the land taken? I am stating that the equipment that was on the property. Are you stating that there was not a new water line put in to? Correct, I'm stating there was not a water line put on on that. Or are you stating that that water line that is now going to chicken group used to go to the house? No, I'm stating that for as long as I can remember, there was water that went both to the chicken coop and to the house. And there is no longer a house a lot is going there, but the line is not a new line. Are you also stating that the chicken coop had sewage facilities? Yes, the, the incident within the foundation was. Are you actually stating on record? I'm stating on record that in nineteen ninety six, it has. This was before, this was before you were there, in part, you know, I, but obviously you don't need. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, are you stating that line that the back hole put in and installed a water line is incorrect? You were correct, correct, I'm saying that. Also stating that whoever put that line in, did not turn the water on? I don't know who turned on the water. So I can't say that it wasn't the same person or not, because I also don't know who lived in the line. The water line that goes to chicken coop now is one line. Where would it have been tapped to go to the house? You're asking things that I wouldn't know how to answer, because I would have worked one there. The, the line that goes to chicken coop is one line. Then comes off of the tap, comes off of the meter, and goes to right now goes to chicken coop. How would it have gone to the house and then the chicken coop? I don't know what is under the dirt in my wake if I haven't checked it out. Well, that, that is one of the problems, I had a neighbor and a witness. I saw that water line being put in. You saw, you, how would you see it? I didn't. Because I saw the back pool and installing water lines. So I saw the ditch being dug. And I'm like, there's a number of neighbors that you have who testified about. When we saw the water line. Well, let's talk about proof and evidence, because I'm going to say for a fact that there is nowhere. Any part of the border, any part of the personal in which it could be seen that if there was a ditch. What would be inside the ditch, that is not visible. And so a testimony that would say differently would not be truthful. You can't see that, that, that land is above, for example, the road that borders. So for the, for the board's purposes. The water line, the, the back hole did dig a ditch and the water line was put in between on the raised portion of the dirt. That goes along where the leach field is and over to the, the chicken coop. Evidence, there was also, and again visibly, also a ditch dug from the chicken coop to the septic tank. That was not there when the house blew up. When the house blew up, the excavator, the large excavator that went in to demolish. The, the damn ditch, drove over the leach field, dug around in the dirt. And it's to have been a water line to help the doors on, it's certainly there. Then putting out a lot of water, so after that water line, the ditch was dug and the water line was installed. Somebody, quite likely the first one that dug the ditch and put the water line there, turned the water on. That in itself was a misdemeanor tamper. That was not approved by the city and misdemeanor tamper. I personally, and as I think an official of the city, probably have the authority to open that pit. I did so, because I was curious, it's where the water was coming from for whether that chicken was right, was that a chicken? Before we have an account. For the Valvezes, I opened that pit after the ditch was put in and the water line put in, and the water line was turned on. At that time, I know it by Jim, that that water was on, and he sent somebody to turn it off. That, after that is when Mr. Valdez came down and real and then pleaded for. Not to turn it on. Which I think goes to any points, the one being that if, if one. When you just see things that you pass what you can see, imagine to happen, even so, after the fact. The water was turned on, which inherently includes an implication of eligibility. So it would still be moot, I'd stop to address that because you again don't have evidence of this. You have the imagination of what you connect from the type of equipment. And what the type of work you assume being done, but there is no evidence or ability to have seen anything that you claim. And even so, even if you did, it's moot. Because I have, I do have imagination, but I also have eyes, I also have the, and all of us have. Have the village to have seen what, what happened. The same, the same we have that, it's not, it is not just imagination.
So, so you have, do you want to testify as a witness? And you could, you know, step down from the board decision and testify as a witness if you'd like to explain what you've seen. Hey, it's a little unclear for me right now what exactly how, when and what you saw. So that would probably be very important information for us.
If he's not stepping down, would that mean all that testimony would be treated as not testimony?
No, because he does have, if there's things that are, you know, are visible, yes, but. You know, he can see that information, but I think that outside information. I think if you, it'd be helpful to have you testify as a witness.
I don't know that I, I guess I need to request, we've, we've, I, I won't myself.
Okay.
I think that we have, that testimony is to be stripped and then we have one to testify. Other, we have other witnesses that probably would.
Okay, there are other witnesses that have, have seen that, okay, and then, but we will, if, if we need to, we'll come back to a part question.
I would like to point out that when, when there was not an active account, when the water was noticed that was on. I think Jim would be a very, I never, I'm not calling it law enforcement, because that is an obvious conversion. Yes, that's that.
That's me.
But you did not have an active account at that time, water was turned.
I didn't turn it on, and I paid for the water that was used after it was turned on.
Well, that's what, you know, it could have, it could have been investigated at that.
And yet it wasn't.
Jim decided to play nice and he'll do that.
And yet it wasn't, I mean, the thing is, this process is something that I'm hoping through what justice stands for and its principles. Would follow according to those principles, simple things like you just gave testimony that sure has influence. That people are going to take it as that thing, yet you don't want to step down as a, as a decision maker. Here to be, to give testimony, therefore what you're saying should not be considered testimony. Those, those types of principles exist, the principles of the implication of eligibility of service. Post what you're talking about, you can look at things that are lengths that say this could have or should have happened. And yet it didn't, and the principles of law would say, then we don't talk about it as if it's that way. And if we're not going to follow those principles here, then even so, I'll move the other routes that do afford these questions.
Yeah, just a comment about that legal argument that. Once water was turned on, there's assumption that everything prior was done. Science with the rules and the regulations, I don't believe that is to be the case if the district were to find that there was a violation. It's important for public health and safety purposes for the district to be able to terminate water service, to be able to allow inspection of lines. So if, even if the unlawful. If you were to determine that there was an extension of a water storming that had not been inspected. It's still very important that it be inspected for public health and safety purposes. So I believe it is in your discretion to find that there was a rule violation, that water must be turned off until those. Until that rule violation is corrected and inspections.
If the awarenesses of those claims to be out of compliance existed before the water was turned on. Then would it not be part of that turn on to have, that, that is an awareness, it's not a new thing becoming. Made aware of post service, so service was turned on with it being aware of us. That whatever we had to say or didn't say about the issue.
How long were you paying water before?
The water, we noticed the water the month prior, we noticed the water the month prior, we paid two months, the first month we got. And I imagine that's consistent with data, because I imagine the charge for that water. That, that we paid for came from that data.
Okay, so other questions that you have for either.
Question.
Yeah, correct.
What type of backflow prevention you have from the chicken coop to their main line service?
The, I don't know what I don't know under the dirt, because I wasn't part of that. When I was a child, that concrete was poured with that fun.
So you don't know if there's backflow prevention from the chicken coop?
I assume whatever was required at that time, if it's different, if it's the same, it'd be the same. One other question I have was, have you had a septic tank check? Because with the blowing up of the house that was connected to that. It blew the roof off the neighbor's house, the raised it six inches. So there's got to be some back pressure that. Well, I can say that although the neighbor's house has suffered damages that took insurance claims. That even the agricultural building suffered no damage, so I can't speak to the construction quality of the surrounding buildings. But the construction quality of that one did not undergo any damages that either required.
But what I'm worried about is with the septic.
I assume it was built with the same quality, because it happened at the same time. Well, we got, we already gave work of data that shows that water is not working differently than a functioning line would work. And I have experienced nothing that would indicate to me that likewise any other thing connected to the. Cabin is not working correctly, I have no reason to believe that there is a concern in anything functions as it should. The chicken coop agriculture building, where is it all? Fifty three minutes of oil drives at the top.
Well, we've been calling it an anthill.
Yeah.
Cabin.
Uh, yeah, yeah, right, agricultural building. It has lopsided because of that, so.
Yeah. So do you live there?
No, my residence is three five eight, we're running the stream.
Um, does anybody live there?
Nobody else, I was residents.
Okay, so what you're saying was the only time that you eat water is. When somebody's there, I'm sensing the fact that your father didn't need water.
Right, well, they do tell me it often, we already are often, yes.
Right, so do you spend the night there?
I have been there both day and night.
Okay. Do you, do you often?
Uh, I guess, I guess I'm a discretion, I don't know how you define.
I don't know, Jack, really about our situation, because. But if you're living there, you just call it a cavern.
Right, it has that aesthetic.
Okay, so, so it's a cavern?
It's a chicken coop in detail, and in the system, it's an agriculture building, that's its legal statement.
Chicken's living in the cavern?
Yes, correct. The chickens live in the chicken coop slash agricultural.
But do they live in the cavern?
Presently, yes.
They're in the, they're inside the cavern now.
They're inside the chicken coop now, yes.
Is that inside the confines of the cavern?
There's one building. It has the aesthetic of a cavern, it is in the system and legally an agricultural.
I'm asking the question.
Are chickens inside of it, yes.
So, when you're staying at the cavern, are the chickens in there with you?
Yes.
Okay.
When the ag building have chickens in it, it's an agricultural building, agricultural land, agricultural land. Okay, which is a lot of.
Why do you have the chicken?
I have the chickens, the present ones I've only had for a couple of years.
For what?
Yeah, yeah, short time, the current chickens I've had for a short time. I do now.
Oh, sure.
Uh, I could check the date, I guess. These chickens that I currently have.
Did you have chickens before, the chickens you've heard of them?
Yes, and the building was used as a chicken coop even before recent ownership, it's been a chicken coop even if it was designated a chicken coop. Before, but from an owner, at a time, the house is still up.
Okay, are there any additional questions for either Mordecai or Jim or myself? Before we open up to public comment?
That map of, of the septic system?
You're just. The chicken coop is though, is that.
Yeah, I'd like to make a copy and I would begin them.
Yeah, I'm not all. Jim, I know it's about this. Please, I'm trying to get it.
Oh, yeah, this is the, oh, this is the map.
Yes. All right, would you be able to hold it up now, please? All right, well, would you be able to hold it up now, please? House, porch, then, okay, this comes from nineteen ninety-six. I was born in nineteen eighty-two, but nineteen ninety-six, I was fourteen.
That contains to the same, that's a super bad idea.
Right, right, right. What I'm saying is that I wouldn't be able to answer about this beyond knowing that this existed at that time, I was fourteen, unless it be, I don't know how to answer.
If you have questions about it. The other stuff that's required by the health department for, for permit for services for the septic system. You have some map that you require.
Well, the septic's been there since ninety-six, I do that.
So you noticed on that map that there was a connection to the, to the coop?
At that time, no. At that time, no. That was ninety-six, we're talking about how many decades since then.
So do you have the map of, or permit to extend it to the chicken coop?
I'm not the one who extended, I'm saying it's extended before current ownership. Sometime between then and before my ownership, it was connected.
It should have been.
I, I can't speak to when I wasn't a part of.
Would you like a copy of this?
No, I don't know how to do this.
Okay, I think it's time to open up for public comments.
Edward Perko, we're the joint neighbors.
Name and your address for the record, thank you.
Edward Perko, fifty-three, fifty-five, Sebola, uh, neighbors the property. Uh, not counting my current employer, I hold a class four, state of Colorado, water distribution, uh, and transmission certification. And the problem I see with this water line, especially going into an agricultural building, we don't know that there's not a cross connection there, and it's our right, well, to have safe public drinking water. We depend on these folks here to watch over that for us and ensure that our right is protected to have safe drinking water. If, if a hose, if you know what a cross connection is, that's any time, uh, non-potable source is connected to a water line. Let's say someone goes and feeds the chickens, they fill the water bucket, and they leave home there. There's a water rebrake, which happens frequently up here, it's a naked, wood sucks the water out of that chicken water into the water tank, to go to all the houses when the water comes back on. So that's why it's important to have a backflow preventive device as simple as a vacuum breaker on a garden room. You know, I'm, I'm looking for R R. Also, the septic system, if you're using water, where's that water gone? And we want to know that. You know, we're downhill from that. If the septic tank was damaged, you know, is that water leach down to our property? We need to know. Nineteen ninety-six, that's a long time ago, for septic, especially when it went through an explosion. I mean, I can attest, well, I can attest to the damage to the house. You know, and all of it, everyone. When it blows the garage door out of the house, blowed the roof up six inches, I mean, that's quite an explosion. And, you know, anytime the property changes hands, is sold, is rehabilitated again, the septic tank, it should be go tested for, uh, public county health department. It should be go tested, make sure the leach field's working, make sure they're intact, anytime the property changes hands. I don't remember how that didn't happen, but.
And that's also a state, or it's, it's not just, it's a state law for the septic, that the county is in charge of doing inspections, that's actually state.
The county did it, because they were so high the county, when it went to auction.
It would have been the seller's, seller's obligation to do it, I don't know.
The county seller in the auction, so if it's a county law and regulation and if it was the county of the seller.
You might go back to the county and say, if they didn't do it, you might.
If they didn't, probably I assume they didn't, or that's my point. If a county seller, if it's county code, I would imagine the county did, or the county was supposed to.
You mean, is there a cheating?
Yeah, it was just.
It would have been.
Okay.
It would have came.
I don't know what it done.
You had your time, I'm speaking.
Yeah, no, she asked.
It's my right to speak right now. Um, like I said, backflow, we don't know where the water's coming, seventy, ninety-six, hadn't been inspected. There's the map right there, it does not show a line gone from the chicken coop to the septic tank. There's no, that, that's the, that's the law right there. That's what's on file, at the health department. We've always been attested, it was done in fields, you know, I wasn't there at the time. And also, uh, I have some concerns, you know, from my agricultural, background, agricultural background. And I mean, I never have kept chickens inside a chicken coop with no one seeing them. I'm not saying you don't have them, but I'm saying, you know, there's also a animal rights point of view, that they need to be watered, they need to be fed, you know, we don't have that, you know. That's my point. Well, this, I did not ask for rebuttal. I just said.
No, I wasn't.
We're asking, I'm not saying you're in conflict, I can't say a word about it.
Okay.
All I'm saying is.
My name is Joel Koch, fifty-three, fifty-five, Sebola, I live next door to the... My husband and I built in nineteen ninety-eight, so we know a lot of what has happened to the property and its history. Um, first of all, there's been a lot of talk about the septic system. I don't know what debate on that flat or that plan or that septic drawing that you have, but I can tell you that in the next owners after the ball guesses, you know, I believe they bought in twenty-fourteen, they did some revamping to your septic system, that septic system, because it wasn't working properly. I remember the chuckers hauling in tons of dirt and huge rocks and building up a big mound. And I, you know, I'm not an expert on septic systems, but I do know there was a lot of work at that time. Second thing I'd like to mention is, both the chuckers and Jessica, the next owner, forgive me for lessening, helps my mind, they both had animals. They strung garden hoses to water those animals. They didn't have a tap in that chicken coop. I will also attest to the fact that, yes, I did see a back hole and pipes and digging going on in your property. I wasn't the one that filed the complaint, but I am a witness to it. If it goes before, I will gladly be another witness. Chickens, I've not heard or seen any chickens. And for you to get up here, Mr. Valdez, for him to get up here and say that he's li, he's not living there, he's living there. We even have pictures of him sleeping on his roof in the summertime. He's there.
I do that.
Yeah. Well, if you're not living there, you're sleeping there, and then you're there all day. And the tracks, your driveway, you've got a perfectly smooth driveway, obviously it's being driven every day by somebody there, otherwise it'd be covered with weeds. I mean, I know a lot about weeds. Um, and another thing, you lived when you were a child, you were very young. So for you to get up here and tell people that you lived here all your life.
Oh, I lived, I don't, I said I lived over the top, when it's on the honest to, so I grabbed the other house door and said, we should all do this, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not going to argue. If you check the records, go to the assessor's office and you'll see how many times the property is sold, how many different people have lived there. And also, if you go to the health and the county records, you'll also find out that there have been no permits pulled. You didn't pull a permit when you moved into that chicken coop. There was no permit. You do not go to the health department like all the rest of us have to go when we build, or when we move, then, into a vacant house.
I, I love you.
I'm not going to argue with you. I'm done. I need a witness to help me to act, to get to.
Anyone else?
Sweet, something informational, he does actually have chickens.
Well, he's a patient, anyone?
Oh, oh, you showed ferret. Sorry, he does actually have chicks there inside, I believe you got from the beginning of this month. He's been pulled, four or eight of them.
What, did you say it was beginning of this month?
Yeah. The current ones I've had, in short term. Did you say chicks or chickens?
Chicks.
Chicks.
Yeah.
So you're blue chick?
Huh?
You're a blue chick?
Blue chick, what?
Well, good, little chick.
Yeah, little chicks, I don't know anything about chicks, but you gotta help me out there. Um, yeah.
Anyone else?
Can we have a five minute recess real quick, and then we'll come back? Okay, thank you.
Ten minutes?
Ten minutes, after right now.
The recess is ten minutes.
Thank you.
I'll be back.
Oh, boy.
You beat one especially.
We're gonna try it just thirty-nine years.
Because we have one beautiful red in there.
There's a guy, he'll boost in place. We have got shot last year.
Oh, yeah, oh.
Last, and completely within last. You went down. You know, and the guy wasn't arrogant. Shot on something like that, like, I heard he's on a careful.
You don't have one?
No, I, I don't.
You want to hear?
I got some.
I'm not bothered by that, I'm sincere. I'm sincere, trust me. Good to see you basically before we started. Well, this is standard stuff for you.
I mean, oh, we.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was great.
Yeah, I know, I'm gonna be, I water for my family, I water for all of them.
Yeah, hey! I don't know what you're gonna do, it's a, it's wide, don't hang out. You may as well, I'll be the kind of team, you know? Officially, show them the spots.
Well, I'm a pretty, so assuming that she's. We'll see, I'm gonna ask.
That's exactly.
Some of those trees, you have like three houses, it's all come along, I don't think.
Why are you so weird with the last year? If the bill for retaining law, um, one out of it.
We're gonna watch it, I guess, I'm gonna measure water, let's get it on. Fuck, it's three or four. More. I'm kidding, I don't know.
I hope.
We open the public hearing. Eight fourteen.
Okay, so is there anyone else who wanted to provide public comment who has not had the opportunity? Okay, then the board may have, may ask any additional questions if you have any additional questions or you may seek a motion. Do you wanna actually, did, did you wanna, Neil, did you wanna say something?
Yeah, Jim, yeah, so I'm, I am going to refuse myself, so if you have any question, I can deal with it.
Okay. Do you wanna step down? Just step off the dais for a moment. Our, our dais, our fancy dais. Okay. Okay, so are there any, um, any additional questions or is there a motion?
Uh, I, I would like to ask question. Within what I read. There was three conditions. That if we were able to. See the line, make sure that it isn't in the same ditch as the sewer line, all of that kind of stuff. Which it would be your responsibility of dug up and we can inspect it. The other thing was this award, if you, the septic sign, septic system was tested. And maybe able for our students that or get a report from a certified septic inspector. And allow our employees on the property to do our inspections and stuff when we need to. We would allow you to come in and. Get a variance, allow the board to have a hearing to have a verdict. But at this point, I feel that we need to shut it down at this point. Are you willing to meet those conditions to get it back up?
Uh, I'm not understanding the conditions, uh, if we're to talk about it legitimately. One is, I don't know why it would be that, uh, the septic needs to be dug up when we're talking about a water line. Because, uh, because again, we're not talking about sewer connection sewer pipes, sewer service, we're talking about something outside of the curbing. Uh, uh, your inspection beyond installation. Uh, I still stand by the, the fact that, uh, I was not party to those things being put in whenever it was. And I believe it was prior to the house building or nothing possibly around those mid ninety. Uh, that said, for example, with the water line, I know that you know there's nothing not functioning because of the data of its service. But if there was an area that. We could dig up together and see for the first time that that area would be sufficient for you to say the line looks like it was connected correctly. Whoever did it, then I will dig up that section for you to see that, if that meant we just dropped the issue and you say it was connected right. We know it works right.
Or added.
Whatever it is, if you need it, the idea, for example, the idea, I wanted to dig up the entirety of the space between. With the tap and my building to look at the whole of it is not only unnecessary because you know it works. It's, it's, it would be a ridiculous amount of cost just to say, don't shut off my water, but I think legally, obviously, there's not a right to. But in an effort to cooperate, if you wanted to go where the tap is and uncover so you could see the connection. And say it was done right or not, I'm not bothered by that and I would shovel that for you to see. Because again, all this is, all this is about, all the energy about standing up at night because you're worried about my ability to handle chickens or whatever is unnecessary. We're saying, we know it works, you wanna see it's connected right, we can do that and all we're doing is keeping on already on water that I pay every month for. And that you guys receive money from in the business that you are in. Mind boggling to me that it is of the scope and size of, but I can do that.
So all I want is a yes and no, are you willing to do meet the conditions to be able to come back to bring to the board and the verdict?
Is what I described, not what you're describing.
I don't know.
I could show, I would be willing to dig up so you could look at the connection. And if you inspect that and it meets whatever standard you want to, to leave water on, I would agree to dig up that section for you.
Well, it would probably just be more than one section, probably be a, uh, I'm not saying that you have to dig up the whole line, but you have to dig up sections. So that way.
How are we talking and?
And I don't know, I'd have to go up there, I've never been on new property.
Aside from when you just about to hand deliver letters.
All right, I was only on the level.
Uh, you came further than that to talk to my dad, I was there. Anyways, but that's irrelevant, we're talking about something else. Uh, I can't answer, I don't know the details of, if there's something I have to do with the shovel, that would satisfy your curiosity about the line. I would do that, and if that in and of itself satisfied leaving my water on, I would do that. We're talking about the type of cost and effort to have machinery, dig up long stretches, my answer to that is no.
So we're, we're motion?
We are waiting for a motion, just to clarify, in the two letters that we sent to Mr.
My question to.
And, um, to Mr. Valdez, there were, um, conditions that it, in both of the letters, it said if you do the following mandates, then. Or would not be shut off, and if the water is shut off, it would be. Conditions are met, and one of the main points is to allow inspection of the property, we're told here today that we, that. That Mr. Valdez would allow district representatives on the property to inspect the system.
If we're agreeing what that is, I can agree that, my issue isn't even with, with Jim doing inspections, my issue is with Jim knowing I don't present the law on my land. But then doing things that are not listed in his reasons according to code, which I'm not saying to have that dispute, I'm just saying. Inspections according to what is in the code do not offend me. And if there are things that I can provide you with, like a shovel can dig up enough dirt for you to say that word.
It might be more than shovel.
Right, in that.
If, I would say.
I can't commit to.
Because I've run a shovel before and I'm gonna, and I've dug ditches and I can tell you it's the kind of inspections that would be necessary or gonna take a piece of.
If we're talking more candidly, because granted.
Okay, I just, I'm just telling you.
Right, I might try and be clear with you. Right, and I want you to.
More than a show.
Okay, okay, if it, it'll take more than what I've been clear enough to say I would to do, as I've said, I do have before we have motions or whatever. If, uh, Neil has stepped in as testimony, according to what he's already said, then I would like to have questions based on a testimony.
Okay, um, there's other opportunity for you to question, um, one of the witnesses, but. Mr. Elliott, would you like to provide any additional testimony in as kind of a three minute public comment?
So as a, as a piece of this, my. Neil Elliott. I am, he booked him on the board, but I have recused my fellow. I live on Brina's Road. And in the neighborhood, one half a mile from the, uh, eastern property. As a virtual of in that position, I presume that I have the authority to, uh, to check for our service. And I did so, I, I did see the, the back hole did a ditch, didn't water one. And this was, uh, this is before Morticide was on the property, this is when his dad was, was spending a lot of time there. So it could be that Morticide not aware of it, but that is, that did happen. The original water line on that property did not go to the chicken coop. The original water line went to the house. It was shut off and destroyed in half year. So this ditch was put in around the edge of the leach field. To code, I don't know, I was, I was concerned that, it was an individual with a back hole that put this line in. There was no, no crew, no, uh, company names, nothing on the, the back hole that put the line in. And I was kind of curious as to how that lined up put in and didn't get detected before that bill, like I had a good one, I put mine on there. But I have had inspection by natural and by the. And that didn't happen on the, off of the, um, you know, the Valdez property. So I was kind of curious if, what was happening, how that was going on. I did, uh. Kind of get suspicious as to where the water was turned on, I checked to see if the water was turned on, checked the world, the water was on. I notified Jim the water was on, you know, that we should turn it off, if it had not been authorized, there was no account for the Valdez to back on. And he did so. That's when they missed the Valdez movement, came down and paid, and paid a plea for going back on. And honestly, it was incorrect for him to do so. Two issues, one issue is a tamper. One of the reasons that Morticide has brought up there for a reason to turn off water is tamper. Tamper is ill able. It is a history, it can have to become a felony. But in this case, it quite likely is a misdemeanor. That happened, somebody entered that pit, turned on that water line, it was not GCMB involved. Turned on that water line without authorization, that is tamper. So once it turned off, then that took care of what I was concerned about, but then it got turned back on. When they put that water line in, they went near the leach field. Is that water line close to the leach field? I don't know. I live down, downhill from the leach field. Is the leach field working towards not contaminating our soil or properties? I don't know. Is it contaminated water line that goes through the chicken coop? I don't know. Is the back hole preventing it? If, if not, back hole preventing at the, the tap. Is the water contaminated going back through the tap of? Mr. Davis asked about, I don't know, we don't know. Is there a health issue there? Absolutely. That's what, the septic line, the septic pan also was attached to the chicken coop with a shovel. They dug a ditch with shovel, the taps are septic pan to the chicken coop. That was not there when the chicken coop was simply a chicken coop. Even on that map, for sure. And it represents the, the house, but does not represent the chicken coop. Was it from that lady pulling the hook into chicken coop? Not according to public eye records. So both of those were installed illegally and correctly, we don't know. Would it be appropriate to, to, this is that, a two foot section of the water line? Absolutely not. Absolutely not, that water line needs to be tested, it needs to be checked. It needs to, they need to see that that water line is up the code as far as being ten feet away from the leach field. Ten feet away from any septic or sewer system. Is it? We don't know, I got a book by now. I was a part of it. But it, it's there, that's why we have a call, that, it's tamper. What kind of penalty use up for tamper? Make sure that water. Without authorization. And that's all I know.
The water was set off when it got to the electrician, which inciting the protests of a lot of. It was.
Okay, do you wanna make a short response?
Yeah, yeah, I have, if you do that. Uh, you know, uh, there was things said that, that I don't know where they come from and it's said for the first time. The idea that, uh, the septic was connected with digging a line with a shovel, I don't know where that comes from. I know that I am hearing it for the first time, I don't have anything with a shovel to that septic in my way. So I don't, I don't know if he's saying he saw that or if he's just saying that's what he believes after. And I don't know when he's trying to get it out of there, but it gets a little late. But in regard to quoting the code that says you can shut off water when water is to the tap is tampered with. That was done and done on both grounds, whoever it was that turned on water, it was then responded to by shutting it off. The water that is turned on now came from after that and the water that was served recorded that was painful. But the service now is not on because of tamper, then too. Doubtful consequence, something doesn't make sense to me or according to the code. To be honest, Tom.
And I have one additional question for you, Mr. Valdez, are you the owner of the property?
Yeah, presently, yes.
That doesn't match the county clerk.
Yeah, I have a computer, I got two things.
Okay.
First is that I have a power of attorney from my dad to speak here in capacity, often regarding because the computer hasn't updated it yet. But I also have a title I filed with the court system yesterday so that I am both in an authorized title. And will be in a computer that isn't right off of the home.
Oh, thank you, and that, the title you filed with the county was that indeed?
Yeah, it's quickly.
Meaning property, okay, can you submit both of those to the record as well so that we know?
The, uh.
Property owner.
County recorder in Furt has that, we, they know it back to me after their process.
Okay, you wanted to email us a copy after the public hearing. Do you have copies of the power of attorney?
Yeah, I have that on me.
Okay, sure, we'll take a copy of that and then we'll, if you're speaking on behalf of the property owner, is that correct?
Right.
And I, I'm speaking on behalf of me and the property is mine.
You're trying to find that you're the. Okay, thank you.
You still need the, the power of attorney thing and.
If you're, if you'd like to submit it, you can submit it, we can only consider what's been submitted on the.
I don't know what's meaningful, but that is the transparency of the whole thing, is I do know the computer, my dad's this is property owner.
Right.
I have power of attorney on this matter.
Okay.
And I am the current property owner in the system and, uh, the, yeah, but whatever that means and whatever, I don't know.
Okay.
That's the fact.
Okay. Um, board, what is your pleasure?
I have a question.
Well, I, we don't take que, public questions at this time unless, do we have a vice president, vice chair?
Yeah.
Okay, you're on the. You can decide whether you'd like to, um, take an additional public comment or whether you would, um.
I think, I think we sort of know.
Okay, you're, you're running the meeting now. Okay.
So we're looking for a motion?
Yes.
We, you have a proposed order before you, and if you need to have a motion and take additional time to formulate the order, you could also do that. Proposed order that's before you does find that there would be, um, a violation. And it does list all of the violations that the district manager ran through, so if you want, wanna find that some are violations and others are not violations. We can modify this order as we go. But basically, the, um, proposed violations were building a sewer service without inspection. And using the septic system without inspection and a variance, and I think we could take out variance. It looks like it was approved at the time, but I think we need to, um, I think we need to reapprove it and re-inspect it. Um, by backfilling the water and sewer service extensions without allowing for connection by the district, installing such lines. Without using an approved contractor, by transferring the water cap to single family residence, should be with the C E. To a chicken coop without district approval and, um, ordering the district manager off the property. And not allowing inspection of the water and sewer facilities. And turning on the water service instead of requesting that the district turn it off. So those are the actions that were alleged to have violated the rules. The first step is for you guys to make a determination whether you think there was a rule violation and then whether you would shut off water. And this would be in order to that effect if that is the pleasure of.
Do we have any additional comments from the remaining board members?
I'm good.
You also have the ability to continue this until your next meeting. If you feel like you need any additional information, you could ask that, that the district manager come back to you with that additional information.
I don't think that's necessary. Um, I'm gonna make a motion that we shut off the water at fifty-three oh zero ninth of Volga Drive pursuant to the order, the order directory stated if we're coming out twenty-five, twenty-five. Uh, with the, with the variance that we do not need or with the change to the order that we do not indeed a variance for the septic system since it was approved. And until these issues are resolved, the water will remain off.
All second.
Now, time for any discussion amongst three board members.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, yes. Um, I don't like doing this. I don't like having to do this, but what we have here is a safety issue. A safety issue that, uh, may sleep for two weeks or two months or two years. Or with the shit in the ground tomorrow, may have, uh, consequences for other users on the water line. Um, I think it's my responsibility to look out for that safety. And I think when you see something that's unsafe, you deal with something that's unsafe. And if you have a car that has bad brakes, you don't wait till you run into something. So like I said, I, I'm sorry that I have to do this, but I don't have to do this because I'm feeling it too. I think we all feel that way.
Can we have a vote, Ray?
Uh, yes.
Kara?
Yeah.
And I vote yes as well.
You want to ask a question? Does that mean now that the water will be shut off, there will be no business and title we should measure to have on my lawn? And therefore we can have delivery letters or other lines? I don't want you to put these on my lawn.
Okay, so the district still has a right to access the public right of way because that is the public right of way. But in terms of, and they will also have to access the property to turn off the water.
Right, no, no.
And then to turn it back on, they are, you have to, you don't get these inspections, that's why we're most here. So I think the, the balls of New York Court next to come back to the district if you say, I want to do these inspections now.
No, I want to do, but if I don't, then I say, if I say I don't want anybody to touch past my lawn, they have to respect that.
And I have that.
We disagree on that, clearly.
That is anyway.
We disagree.
Yeah, so you're not able to choose anymore. I don't want all the vegans.
You're in charge again.
I just couldn't respond.
So we're gonna shut the public hearing that should go on. And then I go back to the regular meeting.
No, you're, you're, yeah, well, yeah, so. Okay, next on the agenda is water survey, this can't be called. Uh, like I said, we have that one where I have provided the order for Paul Longshot. Our. More questions? As long as I'm sure I already figured out the motion.
Are you getting questions for call motion?
Then, I would like to go ahead and make a motion, uh, to approve the water survey containment detection action.
All second.
Okay, now we can talk about.
About what I'm talking about.
Okay, uh, it's a lot of money. And, uh, I like the idea of splitting it up, but I really like the idea of getting those meters in before we do it. I really like that idea because we know that's a problem that we haven't solved yet. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I think, I think Ray is right. I agree with that. I, I think the bigger issue is getting the meters changed. What we need to do to get the meters changed on the time of water that's been, that's been riding on. I don't know if everybody's busy, things come up. We've looked at different options, different contractors. We need to explore maybe a possibility of setting just a qualified person, temporary crew or something inside just to deal with the meters in half a week so we can get this going. Um, this can be right on in a couple of years.
So, so what, we're, we're out on a portion of, uh, of the motion. Is it, yeah, sounds like both of you are pretty much in agreement that, that we, we should not pass this motion at this time until we've communicated. And that's what's kind of the difference.
Yeah, it's going off the rail.
It's, it is, but it's part of the data collection thing. Um, I mean, the, this, the seventy, the first seventy thousand dollar component of this is gonna be data collection. And part of the data collection is gonna be, they're gonna spend, uh, uh, some time and money and they're gonna say, we need to get these meters updated. We know that.
I don't want to jump, put down junk money and then have the data points not totally accurate because we're, we're still at issues outstanding.
That's cool, but. So that, because let's just go on this. Well, what I'm, what I'm saying is we want to forward it. We could start on one end of channel to get to that point where we don't have our change. For, for the leak detection side. You want to.
So you want to leak detection in front of the data collection?
How would you want to do it?
Well, I don't know, I don't know how to do it. I think that's, uh, it's only, what was I saying? Three months.
Yeah.
So we're still gonna run into the, the head walls, the.
Yeah. And just.
Yeah, I, I.
Brainstorming.
I'm glad that you're wanting to get on it too. I'm just. I think, uh, stay on topic. We're just making.
Yeah, so that's, Jim, could we, uh, make sure that regardless of how we roll here, if this goes on the that was business or on, on the agenda sheet, every meeting.
Yeah.
Let's go. What?
No.
Doug?
No.
Ray?
No.
It's a project, yeah, glad we have. I would know. We, we have, I agree, we need to get that. Okay.
Okay, next on the agenda is C C N S, you got two questions.
Who's here?
I'll make a motion that we include these together and approve the sharing films at seven one nine one for us and drive. The fans at forty-eight point zero thirty four.
Moving to discussion. No discussion? Let's go. Kara?
Yeah.
Ray?
Yeah.
What?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, no action items? Uh, all business? Well, I'm, I'm, uh, really, I have no information on it yet. Uh, the other wells, we have tested them all. They are working well. That tested, not once quarter now, so that way we don't have time to give it a pass. Uh, for the last order, we did do two tests. Uh, one was coming from the, uh, north park area. The other one was coming to the south park area. Where I mean, the next testing mode of move, moving from Dell to Dell. To see if we can find a location where it might come in from South Park. Uh, the only other option I have is we shut up all of South Park and see if it shuts down. But, uh, it's gonna take a, a process of going, I think, picking houses out. A little out of time to work there. So taking the whole division out. Um, meter change out, I know Nate, I don't know. Nate, Jacob's on my mind. Even, he's working on it. We get hired a new guy in, uh, which lives, we started, or two weeks, this is the second week.
You know, yeah.
Jimmy does.
I don't know, going on a month.
Yeah. Okay, I'll, is Danny here for the bottom month, he's working. Uh, we got Zach Deal or Zeke? Uh, that. He helped, uh, if we started last Monday, or Monday before that. Uh, so we're trying to fill positions that are going there. I know we have two trainings so far with our water guys at work. Boxworthy, uh, rejects to him. That is for training these guys, uh, on a monthly basis to get their certification. We have, also have a guy that we're looking at that he's going to be shadowing Bailey. Bailey, hopefully still issues, which was what we probably have a new guy, a young guy at that factory. Uh, so we're, we're all in that process right now. Uh, Jim, we're waiting for it still.
I'm still.
We have one that's out on, uh, where it was called still. Uh, we're, we're trying to bring guys in so that way when we do, if we do that action over, we will continue to be maybe one down at most, but we're fully staffed right now. With the one on working top. Um.
Yeah. So how many meters have we changed out since the last meeting?
No. Yeah. We've been.
Okay, I just, I'm gonna ask the question over the meeting. So if we have to read reads and everything, all this last few weeks.
Uh, well, just, Danny and I are still working on that. Trying to figure out when does that happen medium? Uh, Catalot and Loebmont, we're still working on that. Uh, at this point, under, I don't know if there was any more evidence that you came around and talked about. Under new business, we, I don't know, I forget that one, that was new business. New business.
And you're talking about old business or?
Old business. No, it was new business. We had a migration of our email. This, uh, last Thursday, it's been kind of a mess with my email. Until today, I think we finally got it all figured out. Uh, so that's moving forward. Before you guys as a board member, we have you as the new email. We have no longer, uh, uh, GHL, GH Valley. They were going to terminate anybody at the end of June, so we're gonna be starting now so that way we could recoup all of our stuff that we do have with GH Valley, uh, in our computers. And that's been one of the problems that we ran across is they took, in fact, we were just going to shut them off on last Thursday. And we were doing a test on Wednesday and Thursday and they just shut us off. So then they had to go back in and enter all of this back now. All that information now and it improves our storage. And we're that. So that's why we're right now on catching emails from November. Some of them that come up and it says unread. The bottom line is that we are, uh, we are all on the whole city M D.
Yeah, it's gonna be at polo city M D.
Polo dot com.
No, dot com.
Okay. Yeah, then we'll.
We'll be in the same way. It will be called Polo City, R Davis.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And it will take over our, it will properly, it will be more.
Yes, it'll break all your old email, emails up. If you need to, uh, why don't you come in my office, meet him, uh, set you up by any app or, or everything to use the app.
Don't over, in, over count of GH Valley points to it for a bottom mark, I think. And then we'll, we'll come to, so I'm, so using it.
Okay. Right, so new business, uh, what's going on with the Applewood, Joe? Dumping Applewood. What? The, the, call the sack, it's got, uh, made the news?
Oh, that is one of the B C A, A C, uh, it is on the moon back. And it is one that I was, I don't, you don't think.
Don't what?
I don't feel it. I don't, it was accusation from the last time I got.
So it, it is. There's a green belt.
It is the one that, what people come in there. It's the one person that, that. Well, were you talking about, uh, up like the, the playground?
Yeah.
Is that, you know, is it down in the valley or up like playground?
No, it's up at playground.
Oh, no, okay. That one, uh.
Like I just called about it.
That's an open case, even at the count. Yeah, that's one we've had trouble with too.
But it's our property, right?
Do the surveying?
Yeah, it's our property.
Some of it, they're, they parked an RV halfway on it. So half the area is on our, halfway from there.
I thought we established if it was our property, we could go on our property. And, and if it's other property, we can deal with it.
I, I have talked to, because it's on a, the green belt, the playground, I've talked to Josh, we actually need to set up a company. That's what Phil's got. One of the, you know, the board members told me. He doesn't cover that.
I, I, we real deal.
Yeah, and we didn't, you have to be just.
Yeah.
Is there a block at all?
We have it. We have. Over tampering. Yeah, they just sat on the block over in the ditch and. I'm really, we had, uh, state come in and open up the, the ditch wider so that they couldn't.
So it's, it's more complicated than just.
Yeah. We're working out, it's been great, it's been, uh, not only the health department, but the fire department, everybody.
Sure.
All right, we have a course on this?
Yes, course on this. I did, uh, I don't know if you remember, we had this lady that began and it was slow. Did three different, uh, email agreements. Um, she had not been able to meet any of them. She is shut off by, especially that. She is now has to pay the bill and will turn a lot of that on. She's been feeling sorry on it. I mean, there is different coordinations that she can go to, she, help her if she needs it and.
So Jim, you're basically asking the board to do the decision there.
No, no, just, uh, she just said, she wanted, she wanted communications and more.
Yeah.
Explain what I have done and I wanted to spray, bring my side back, this is why.
And I think we need to be, you know, approving it, yeah.
Well, of course, I've gone from that, thinking it's a new road's legs.
What is the status of the property? Is, is the water turned off?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And there's the request, there's not.
There's not, yeah. Well, no, okay, we're dead. Anything else? That's it.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to a jury.
All second.
Who is that here? Well, you're.
That's why, that's why you guys are getting this very.
I think it's a third round.
He was, he sends it through.
Giving the voting on the problem.
Giving the voting on the problem. You mean, you don't have, you don't have.
Are they?
Yeah.
Oh, you're hiding the shade, you're not. Oh, you're going to gas it.
Bob asked me, why is it funny to use Logan, I'm like, man, I started attending to this, I mean. I go through a hole. Yeah, I need, I graduated from Bruce, I need a model here today, I need five.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
What are you excited?
Not me, man. Back in David, I'm like, oh, thank you, I can show up and do it. Party in my, start a program. Friday at like six AM, they'll show up, you work, no, I'm day five AM, I'm like, it's okay, y'all. Still, still, don't, don't worry about it, so we got a collage for you. You have got, I don't know, I don't like the bar. I'm sorry. I don't think I'm saying that.
You don't have a cure.
You can read more, smoke it, hang it on the back.
Well, I do. We can't get, we can't get. All right, sir.
Just.
Oh, I think, oh, it's. It's not, yeah. All right, yeah.
It's very, 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 that's hard.
I can't, I can't. We have made the. I like this. I can't. That's a long thing.
Honestly, this is a job that's.
I know. I mean, we're.
I just wanted to see this. No, no, what, uh.
Why not? For the support. Yeah.
Only work.
Thank you.
Well, right.
Yeah. They should. I don't think we're done. I think they're, they're, well, I would be in the kitchen. Yeah, they're saying that. Maybe they're thinking of the back.
I need to go.
And we're taking, going to the right now. Yeah.
This is a war.
Yeah. I'm restless, we're.
Yeah, I don't think they're making dollars.
I got all mine. He caught them and then I said, oh, that one. Harsh one. Looking at lots of hands, trying to be busy. I don't want to get that so. The way.
I'm not going to talk about, sorry, I'm sorry. I'm really going to change it down, that's, that's. I'm just going to make it.
Are you such a legal here, huh? I was actually.
But they said.
Well.
Something, these are like, that's not right.
I would say that, yeah, I'm tired.
No, but they, but you watch the.
I do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can hold it in.
Well, we should.
I can hear. No, because they're. We also, we're, 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 we're. They're not a walk away. And, yeah. We should, and we always. But I'm sure. Yeah. But we can now, lots more. For children. I mean, since this was out, you know, for the.
Yeah.
Well, yeah. I'm fine. Some of my, my mother. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, we have.
Things for trouble. Just because. And we're like, oh.
I don't feel right.
I don't know.
Okay.
Yep. Well, for the. Yeah.
Yeah.
My city is all. Because of that, it's not.
Yeah. That there's, that should drive up the. Well, it's.
Yeah.
Well. Another element. That's what we're saying.
Let me come by.
I see. I'm gonna see the.
You're nearing the best part.
Well.
I wasn't that close.
Well, yeah, probably.
Yeah, anytime you knew that. That's why. We got it.
Yeah, I mean, all the. Yeah.
I'm more of a. It's a nice.
I'm also in one of them. It was kind of wrong, it was calling the first outfit, it was a game. He sits in the, it's like, what was he? What was it?
I assume I did.
With all the.
Um, yeah. Yeah.
I'm gonna need to.
Well, yeah, I, I just didn't watch it.
So we've got this.
I want your other thing.
All right. I don't, I don't know. See what the name was.
Yeah, I, I. It's a bit of your, your water goes. Feeding.
No, no, that one I'll. In that, that's not for you.
Yeah, that would be on T A.
I said, they didn't.
Cause I'm.
Sure, my brother. I'm a little older. Morning, I'm sleeping.
I'm, yeah.
Anyway. So I think. I got that.
Well, I think the, I guess. From the home. One. All that's. It's clear, it's all, I say, it's a beautiful place in the. They'll come back, but that'll be, it's, it's, it's. This, I want to see. Very good.
You should see.
It wouldn't have been a little, yeah.
They shouldn't. What if they want?
Always. So, anyway, it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were, they were down there talking about. Oh, yeah.
We're just. The whole time. So I can be fine, I think you, but sure, if you want to get. But you're right, so.
Yes, I am. Please.
You say no, but I mean, I just. No, probably. Yeah.
All right. Yes. Well, stand up. Of course. We're kind of neighbors.
I know.
Which one?
That's right.
Yeah, which one? Saratoga.